Welcome to the last meeting of the year. We please start with the roll call.
Council President Corman.
Here.
Councilmember Prince. Councilmember McGurven.
Here.
Councilmember Halloran.
Here.
And there's Mr. Prince, okay. Councilmember Rivera.
Here.
Councilmember Vaughn.
Here.
Councilmember Perez.
Here.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all present.
Alright, thank you. Well, tonight is bittersweet. It is Councilmember Randy Corman's last night, and we have a proclamation honoring this day.
Okay, proclamation. Whereas Randy Corman is retiring from Renton City Council at the end of his seventh term in office, and whereas Randy Corman was initially elected as Renton City Councilmember, position number one, in November nineteen ninety-three, and re-elected to his second term in November nineteen ninety-seven, his third term in November two thousand and one, his fourth term in November two thousand and five, his fifth term in November two thousand and nine, his sixth term in November two thousand and thirteen, and his seventh and final term in November two thousand seventeen, for a total of twenty-eight years of service. And whereas seven back-to-back terms over twenty-eight years makes Randy the longest consecutively-serving councilmember in Renton's one-hundred-and-twenty-year history, and whereas during his twenty-eight-year tenure, Randy served as council president six times, public safety committee chair seven times, transportation aviation committee chair seven times, utility committee chair three times, community services committee chair two times, planning and development committee chair two times, and finance committee chair one time. And whereas Randy demonstrated great collaboration, teamwork, and partnership as he worked with five mayors during his time as a councilmember, Mayor Earl Kleimer, Mayor Jesse Tanner, Mayor Kathy Colker, Mayor Dennis Law, and of course Mayor Armando Pavoni, and three chief administrative officers, Jay Covington, Bob Harrison, and Ed Van Bailey. And whereas Randy has served on the I-405 Executive Advisory Group and represented the city's interests in project development, funding, and delivery of the I-405 master plan. And whereas Washdott needs to rename certain projects on the I-405 SR-167 corridor when completed, such as Randy Corman Memorial Renton to Bellevue Express toll lanes, or Randy Corman Memorial North Eighth Street Direct Access Ramp, in honor of the twenty-three years Randy served on the Executive Advisory Group. And whereas for three years Randy has represented the city's interests as an East Rail Regional Advisory Councilmember in continuing the East Rail South through Renton to connect with other regional trail networks. And whereas through all these many years of service as council president, council committee chair, council committee vice chair, and council committee member, Randy always put his community first and was interested and solicited his constituents, viewpoints, perspectives, and input on regional projects and efforts and local initiatives, policies, and programs. Now therefore, I, Armando Pavoni, Mayor of the City of Renton, do hereby proclaim December thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, to be Randy Corman Day in the City of Renton, and I encourage all citizens to join me in the special observance and witness whereof, I have herein too set my hand and caused the seal of the City of Renton to be affixed this thirteenth day of December, two thousand and twenty-one. Signed, Armando Pavoni, Mayor of the City of Renton.
Mayor. Uh, yes, Councilmember McGurven, I believe.
Yes, I move the proclamation to be adopted as read.
Second. Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember McGurven and seconded by Councilmember Prince that the proclamation be adopted as read. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, nay. Okay, motion carries. Alright, well, yes, congratulations to Randy. So tonight is bittersweet. It's really hard to believe that this is your last council meeting. I have a strange connection to Randy. I always remember the day he was elected. The gentleman that he was running against actually was in our restaurant planning on celebrating. And I didn't know Randy at the time, but he beat that gentleman and continued to win six more times. Randy has done a lot for Renton and has seen Renton grow in amazing ways, and it's been an honor and a pleasure to serve with you. And I can't think of another councilmember that's done some of the things that you've done. So, thank you very, very much for all you've done for this community. We all really appreciate it, so.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember.
Well, thank you. I'm deeply touched. Thank you for your work on this proclamation and to everybody that helped prepare it. Thank you to the council. This is a point where if Dennis Law was mayor, he'd say, "Clerk, will you please set the timer?" But I actually, I think the proclamation pretty much says more than I could possibly say about how long I've been serving. I would just like to say it's been a great honor serving the City of Renton and my extreme gratitude to all the people listed in the proclamation, the mayors I've served with. I counted them up tonight. We're up to twenty-one councilmembers that I've served with. And I want to just say that while it sounds like a long time, I mean, I recognize twenty-eight years is a long time. It's the way things flow through government, like the I-405. I mean, those are like twenty-year projects. So, it has been a privilege to actually be able to see some of those things move from the beginning to the end. Say the same about our Highlands revitalization, where we're putting in more affordable housing per capita than just about any other community because of planning that was done twenty years ago, essentially. Same at Southport, where we're getting high-tech campus that we started working on twenty years ago. But really, the greatest gift for me of all in all this is really just sort of having a front row seat as I get to see how hard so many people are working, all the employees of the city, so many volunteers in our community to make our city a better place. And I've often, from my perspective as councilmember, I can see where different people, you know, they'll sometimes think they're the only ones or they think they're cross purposes. But from what I could tell, they're all working the same way. They're trying to get to the same place. And it's just been great seeing that. It leaves me perpetually optimistic about the future of our city. So, thank you for the memories. Thank you for the opportunity.
Alright. Thank you. And Jason, we don't need the orchestra music after all, I guess.
I had a photo. I don't know if I can put it up here or not. Here's my brochure when I was running. What would that be, twenty-nine years ago for office? I don't know if you can see. I've got a few more laugh lines since that time.
Fantastic. Thanks for sharing.
Thanks.
Alright, okay, next up we have the administrative report.
Thank you, just a short one. The Emergency Feeding Program, SOS, in partnership with the City of Renton, will host free lunch events for the unsheltered and those with food insecurity throughout the city. Food and drinks, personal hygiene kits, cleaning supplies, and socks will be available. These events will be held from twelve-thirty to two P.M. on Tuesday, December fourteenth, tomorrow, and December twenty-first. At three hundred Rainier Avenue North, parking is located on the west side of the Renton Airport, north of the intersection of Rainier Avenue North and Airport Way. Information about preventative street maintenance, traffic impact projects, and road closures happening this week can be found at www.rentonwa.gov/traffic. All projects are weather permitting, and unless otherwise noted, streets will always remain open. That's it.
Alright, thank you. Next, we'll open up the remote audience comment period. There remains the strong intent of the city to have public comment regularly included on our agendas. Each speaker will be given five minutes to speak. You'll be called upon by a city staff member. The staff member will call the speaker's name and unmute the appropriate microphone, which will send an automatic prompt to the speaker of, "You've been unmuted." This is the speaker's cue that it's their turn to speak. Please begin your comments by stating your name, city of residence, and the topic you're addressing. Speakers should be able to see a timer on the screen. Please finish up your comments when you see the time is close to expiring. And I know we do have people signed up today.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have five people signed up today. The first is Ashley Dobson. Ashley, go ahead.
Hi there, my name is Ashley Dobson. I am the founder and operator of Urban Market Pop-Up. I live in Renton, and Renton has always been the home of Urban Market. In two thousand and seventeen, I had a vision to bring people into the downtown, partner with businesses I love, show the people of other cities that DTR was a place you could hang out and that your business could have a home here. I had a desire to showcase the local artists and small businesses that exist inside people's homes and garages and to bring the community together with art, music, food, and fun, all while bringing our downtown businesses some life after the sun went down. So on Saturday, April twenty-second, two thousand and seventeen, Downtown Renton celebrated Earth Day in a new way. Many of us knew this building before as Renton Western wear. Some may know the building as the Cortana Building. Most of us now know it as Boon Boona Coffee. But on Saturday, April twenty-second, it was converted into a space the community could gather in and share. I spent hours with my family and friends making paper flowers, birds, and clouds. I borrowed over twenty Christmas trees from my neighbors, and I spent time working with business owners to make the twenty-second a worthy event for the community who inspired it. Businesses of art in our community had specials, small pop-ups of their own are offered to participate in a scavenger hunt, generating even more foot traffic downtown. Businesses like Melrose Grill, Common Ground Cupcakes and Coffee, Mariana Restaurante, Smoking Monkey, Yummy Wands, Cedar River BBQ, Whistle Stop, Garland Jewelers, Four Sisters, Solistic Remedy, The Berliner Antiques For You, Liberty Cafe, the Local Nine-O-Seven, Cugini Florists, and Four Generals. Classes were held at Urban Sprouts and at Sweet Pea Beauty, again, generating even more buzz and activities downtown, ultimately to create foot traffic to our beloved businesses and showcase their talents and products. And inside that vacant building, over twenty-five local vendors, four live music performances, and activities for kids. We had a wall set up where people could write down ways to celebrate Earth Day every day and had an area where kids could paint pots and plant in them. The Christmas trees that filled the space were decorated in giant paper flowers and made it feel whimsical inside the industrial empty space. And all of this were free to the community, vendors, and businesses. Since two thousand and seventeen, I have helped the City of Renton and the Renton Downtown Partnership with several events. I have been active with our Chamber of Commerce, holding events and pop-ups there as well. We have even had businesses pop up with us before they become brick and mortars downtown. Every one of these has had elements of live music, arts, and performances, classes, and workshops, and involvement from Downtown Renton businesses, local nonprofits, and even our local schools like the Limburg Robotics Team. During COVID, the Urban Market worked with local web developers' blocks to create a website and virtual marketplace where microbusinesses who did not have any commerce footprint could still host us all and sell their goods for no charge to them. Tomorrow is the first day of our current partnership with Rain City Catering, a partnership with the goal of once again generating more foot traffic downtown. After weeks of working with local vendors, our downtown businesses, and local artists to create a scavenger hunt, I come here defeated. For almost five years, I have spent my time and energy building Urban Market as a reputable and affordable market to local vendors. I have spent almost five years showing Renton the community that can take place at a pop-up event. I have spent almost five years showing DTR businesses how an event like this could be beneficial for their own. And I have spent almost five years sharing vendors' goods with DTR businesses who now sell their products. Last week, I heard Councilmember Corman say that this week you are to hear a proposal about the Renton Night Market. The Renton Night Market is a trademark partnership between two local small businesses. The Renton Night Market is the event that's happening tomorrow downtown. When I heard this, I looked into the project that will turn Renton Pavilion and Events Center into a full-time marketplace with vendors, art, music, classes, and food. Sounds incredibly like the Urban Market to me. In fact, it is. I would also like to point out, since two thousand and seventeen, more market coordinators and pop-ups call Renton Home, pop-ups like the Black Love Market, Prism, and The Hatchery, to name a few. If the city chooses to move forward, they will be impacting more than just Urban Markets and its vendors and artists, but you will be directly impacting these other women-owned organizations, all of whose businesses serve underrepresented people in our community, giving them a platform. Not only is the City of Renton proposing a night market that is being run by a business outside of Renton, but it will gentrify one of the only affordable event locations in Renton. The Renton Pavilion and Events Center has been home to countless weddings, funerals, concerts, fundraising events, trade shows, and pop-ups for years. Today, I beg the city council to stop with their desires of turning the Renton Pavilion and Events Center into something else. The city's money and energy in downtown should be going to the businesses, organizations, and parks who call DTR their home and who have survived not only COVID, but this lengthy construction. I am begging you, please stop hiring people from outside of our community. Please stop stealing small business ideas and opportunities. Please keep events in downtown Renton affordable by leaving the pavilion intact. And please work on improving what you already have. Thank you for your time this evening.
Mr. Mayor, the next three people that signed up to speak are not in attendance. I have Fancy Vargas-Smith, Kristy Slotemaker, and Diane Dobson. Which brings us to our last speaker, and that's John Glenn. John, go ahead.
Thank you so much. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you so much for the opportunity to speak to the Pavilion Events Center redevelopment project that is currently before you for consideration. When I stood before the council back in two thousand and nineteen regarding this same issue, it is safe to say that the context has changed a little bit since then. But the questions that I had when speaking before the council before are still present, namely.
You cut out, Mr. Glenn.
Is it just me?
No, he cut out.
John? John, we can't hear you.
He can... Are you there, Mr. Glenn? Okay, Mr. Glenn can submit his...
He does have permission to speak, so I think that is on his end.
Okay. Mr. Glenn, if you can hear us, you can submit your comments to cityclerk@rentonwa.gov, and I will make sure they get sent to the council.
Did we lose him?
I think we lost him.
We can give it a minute here and see if he signs back in.
I apologize and thank you for your patience.
Oh, there you go. You're back.
Can you hear me now?
I can hear you, yes.
Perfect. As I was saying, my concerns back in two thousand and nineteen are my concerns today, namely...
Oh, dear. John, we lost you again.
It does look like Diane Dobson has signed on. If we want to circle back to Mr. Glenn after that?
Yes.
Okay. Diane, go ahead.
Good evening, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can hear you.
Wonderful, thank you very much. It was quite a challenge to get in here tonight. The Zoom link that was sent has an error code and broken, and we couldn't get in. I think that's where the... It just shows Webinars has not yet started with the original link that we were sent. So, thank you very much for resending a new link. I appreciate that. Good evening, Renton City Council and Mr. Mayor Administration and Council President, Mr. Corman. Thank you first and foremost for your years of continued service on behalf of our community. You are appreciated beyond measure. I'm Diane Dobson, I'm a lifelong resident of Renton. I've lived in North Renton, a neighborhood off of downtown Renton, and it's actually a street that's identified in the Civic Core Action Plan, which has been a subject matter discussed tonight here and at the... Or on the agenda tonight here and was discussed previously at the Committee of the Whole Meeting. I've lived on this street for the majority of my life, growing up in the house two doors away from where I live now. I'm currently the CEO of the Renton Chamber of Commerce, and prior to taking my position at the Chamber, I worked in our family law firm downtown Renton for over thirty-five years. I worked for my father, who was a practicing attorney for sixty-three years in that location. My grandfather, who was a lifelong attorney and took his last case at the age of ninety-one. Our family law firm was in existence for over a hundred years. To say I've lived and worked in the downtown core my entire life is zero stretch of the truth. The Civic Core Plan is beautiful. These are wonderful and engaging ideas, and I believe there is a lot of thoughtful approach into how this plan was constructed. I was able to take part in many of the discussions, and I truly and genuinely believe that. But I come to you tonight, however, to ask you for consideration in how this plan is being implemented. The plan was designed prior to two thousand and eighteen and adopted on January eighth, two thousand and eighteen. And again, no argument with the thoughtful approach and consideration and the time spent, but it was also well before the idea of a pandemic ever entered our minds, which begs the question, is this plan as it is designed still contemporary with our existing needs as a community, while taking into consideration the recent impacts and supporting of the community that exists and the businesses that have been fighting with all of their might to sustain and survive through this pandemic? What is unique about the businesses, including in the area being developed by this plan, is in addition to the struggles of COVID, they have been impacted by a construction nightmare like no other. While I know the construction project itself was an inherited project, and it came with its own slew of challenges, a major undertaking like this has not occurred in over a hundred years. We would be silly to imagine that that in itself would not present a number of challenges that were unforeseen and unique all on their own. The impact of the project is undeniable, and that seems to be a continued conversation we're having on a multitude of levels. What is our intent versus what is our impact? And I've been before the council multiple times since the construction project began with challenges faced on the project that we had the initial end date of April first that we were looking forward to. The irony of that April first date is not lost. The impacts of the construction project have resulted in not only the decreased foot traffic as the sidewalks were torn up, streets were upended, all handicap accessibility was blocked or unable to be accessed safely, visually impaired and mobility impaired in particular, but the inability for our downtown businesses to take measures similar to other cities to safely draw business to their location, to move their businesses out to the street like we saw in cities like Issaquah or Inumclaw do, where they literally closed the streets down and allowed their businesses to set up tables and booths outside to maintain that occupancy level that we were prohibited in with the fifty percent reduction of indoor occupancy. We were unable to provide opportunities for restaurants to keep their capacity numbers up. The construction resulted in the inability to place pop-up parklets like we saw cities across the nation do. You still see these cute little parklets in Seattle and San Francisco. Again, the opportunity for these businesses to safely resume business that they need to do to survive and sustain. The Civic Core Plan has six design and development strategies in place, and each of those strategies has quick wins, short-term actions, and midterm-long actions proposed. And those who constructed the Civic Plan gave the input as to what the public wanted those priorities to be. It also further breaks down strategies as sustain, activate, and create. And there's a great activation of space, but we have seemed to skip right over the first and most important priority of sustaining. You have businesses that are barely hanging on in this proposal, and the dedication of staff to making something like this work is a diversion of resources that are so desperately needed in helping those currently in our community to survive. I would ask the council, as I run out of time, for further communication, and I would love the opportunity to sit down and discuss the Civic Core Plan in detail with some of those strategies that I've identified tonight. I really appreciate the thought and consideration to the same.
Okay, it looks like John is back with us. Let's give it another run at it here.
Hoping third time is the charm. John Glenn, citizen of Renton. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you so much for your consideration regarding the matter of the Pavilion Events Center redevelopment. As Ms. Dobson pointed out, there are a number of considerations in regards to this redevelopment, and they all center around the Civic Core Plan. When this proposal was first proposed back in two thousand and nineteen, and it was before the consideration of the council, at that time, I asked the council to be careful when taking the largest piece of civic real estate and turning it into a construction zone and a vacant building for a year or more. While the context is very different today than what it was then, the question still remains. And in fact, the question is even more important today when we're facing historic labor shortages and material shortages. We can only expect then that the construction will continue long beyond what may initially be projected. I would ask the council, instead of considering the specific redevelopment of the Pavilion Events Center, which is very clearly listed in the Civic Core Plan and definitely needs to be undertaken, to instead move other parts of the Civic Core Plan up first, things like activating alleyways into seating and event spaces, helping develop the parklet program that was proposed and developed by the Renton Downtown Partnership, taking the backyard, which is the space meant for what goes on in between the garage right now and the Pavilion Events Center, and activating that, and even possibly moving forward with the parking garage retrofit. Any of these would allow the Pavilion Events Center to still be maintained as a center for activity and a hub of community events while still moving forward with other aspects of the Civic Core Plan. I would be open to speaking with members of the council regarding this, and I would like to say thank you so much to all members of the council and Mr. Mayor yourself for taking the redevelopment of downtown so seriously and moving forward with the next steps on the Civic Core Plan. Thank you.
Okay. Did any of the other people that were signed up?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, it looks like Fancy Vargas-Smith has signed on.
Okay.
Fancy, can I?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, perfect. Hi, my name is Francesca Vargas, or commonly known as Fancy. For the first twelve years, I've lived in Renton, and for the past eleven years, my husband and I have raised our four children here. I brought my daughter home to Williams Court Apartments and remember her taking her first steps right outside the Downtown Renton restaurant. During all these years, I've seen so many businesses coming up. But in two thousand and twenty, I was given the pleasure to work with so many amazing business owners on a virtual art walk. Getting to know their stories and their wives has been an unexpected gift of COVID. But I can honestly say that getting to know Kenneth and his beautiful family has been a joy. Kenneth has been a man who is well-loved by his community and highly respected, not because of status, but because of his kindness and his generosity. Pre-COVID, he hosted Summer Fest, bringing in international-known talent at a low-cost or no-cost event center. Event, Kenneth sponsored the Return of Renton Car Show and even participated with his entire car club, during which he brought in a zip line to draw in more foot traffic. He is part of the Renton Downtown Partnership Executive Board Member and sponsors many events and activities in support of all his retail neighbors. During COVID, he pivoted his business to a sustainable approach while continuing to give his labor and services, providing catering for reach, first responders, and other social services, while simultaneously fighting to maintain his business and state a presence in his community. Being able to tell my children, my friends, my family that the Renton Event Pavilion is owned and ran by someone who looks like us has created success and opportunity for himself, his family, and his community gives me a sense of pride that cannot only be explained with words. So today, I ask the council to really think about what moving forward with the Logan Street Market Project would take away from a man who has given so much to Renton for no other reason, and I quote, "I do this for my city, and I do this for my family and for my people. I love Renton, Fancy." Thank you.
Alright.
And that is all I have, Mr. Mayor.
That is everyone. Okay. Alright, next up we have the Consent Agenda. We have two items on the agenda. Is there any that someone would like pulled for separate consideration?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Council President Corman.
I move we approve that Consent Agenda is published.
Agreed. Okay, it's been moved by Council President Corman, signed by Councilwoman McGurven, that the Consent Agenda be approved as published. Any conversation? All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, nay. Okay, motion carries. Next up, we have unfinished business. Council President Corman.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the Committee of the Whole has two reports.
Okay, the first Committee of the Whole Committee Report is regarding the Downtown Pavilion Market Development.
Pavilion market development. The Committee of the Whole recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve that Community and Economic Development Department start design and financial contract negotiations with the Logan Market team to convert the Pavilion from its current event space to a year-round market and public space.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Council President Corbin.
I move that council concur in the committee report.
Second. It's been moved by Council President Corbin, seconded by Councilmember McGurven. Does the council concur with the Committee of the Whole report? Any discussion?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Council President Corbin.
Yeah, I'd just like to say, this will be unfinished business for me because I would certainly like to be able to participate in looking for common ground and a solution that satisfies the entirety of the business community and ensures that Rain City Catering continues to be a big player in our city. I know in Committee of the Whole, we discussed that. Other council members asked those questions, and I just would like to say that I'm hopeful that those discussions will still continue and be fruitful.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember O'Halloran?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to clarify that Kenny Rogers with Rain City actually leases the facility. He is not the owner, correct?
Correct, yes, the city of Renton owns the facility.
Thank you, yep.
Yep. Councilmember Van?
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to, I understand the committee report, and staff has done tremendous job in researching, and this is a project that was initiated in 2018 and 2019, prior to me being on council. And, you know, today's testimony has really brought up some concerns as myself being a small business owner, but yet not in the downtown core. I think that, you know, we as a council should, I encourage us to listen to our small businesses that are being affected. Because the current time right now, as we're in the pandemic, during the pandemic, with Omicron coming, or already here in King County, we're looking at the business effects of that. And so, I do have reservation. I think that it's really different than when it was initially proposed. I do have a question to staff as far as the timeline. We mentioned it earlier, but I am blinking out, so if you can give me a timeline of that and the cost.
The timeline is Rain City Catering, their lease ends at the end of the month, and they're going to be given a year and a month lease. Oh, good, we have staff here. I forget the other part of the question. Oh, that, the, actually, you know what? I'm going to send this over to Chip. He's got the details.
Yeah, just timeline the completion of the project.
Oh, gotcha, okay.
Thank you, Mayor, and Councilmember Van. So, this is, this is just the, I shouldn't say the beginning, the beginning of this was actually the Civic Core Plan, but what the council is being asked tonight is to authorize staff to enter into discussions regarding the design and the financials regarding the future of the Pavilion. Now, when I say that, you saw some conceptual designs tonight, those will need to be refined, and we will, in addition, have to figure out who's going to pay for what? The city versus the tenants versus the Logan Market Partnership? So, this is a multi-party agreement to advance more full utilization and activation of the Pavilion. So, Mayor started answers. I met with Kenny Rogers recently. His lease ends at the end of this month. I told him, and we've extended to him, a one-year and one-month lease, and after that, we'll go month-to-month in three-month increments after that for scheduling purposes for him. The point being is that this to just work through the design and the financials with the partnership and with the city is going to take an extended period of time. This is nothing that you're going to see any construction in the next 12 months. In fact, we'll be lucky to see construction in the next 24 months. This is the very beginning of those discussions. Any actions regarding the financials, how this partnership is created between the city and the Logan Market Group will have to come back to the City Council. The City Council is going to have the final say on when, how much, and where this is all going to come together. This is just authorizing us to begin this conversation for what will be a very long process.
Okay, let's see, oh, next up is Councilmember Rivera.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I may have should have asked this during the Committee of the Whole meeting, and so I do apologize that I'm learning to navigate this new role. Something that was brought up in public comment that I actually had this question during our Committee of the Whole meeting was the outside entity, the outside of Renton businesses that would be in partnership with this downtown Logan Market project, or the mention of like outside businesses that weren't in Renton that would be running this organization. That is my area of concern because I definitely want to try to keep things as local as possible. So, as we move forward in discussions, I would like to have that answered because I was curious about the restaurant and wine barn, who would run those and all of that. So, just as we go forward in those conversations, that's my area, but thank you.
Yeah, well, thank you for that question, because I heard that same comment during the discussion and public comment earlier today. And while the person advancing this proposal, the key partner in advancing the Logan Market Partnership, is gentleman Dave Brett Howard, and Dave Brett Howard is the owner of the Cortona Building. He has, we, he has made significant investments in the Renton community, and as he was finishing the Cortona Building and Boon Buna and everything that he has done there, he's actually looking for his next project in Renton. He is a strong advocate and a strong believer in downtown Renton, and Dave is one of those people, is, he comes to the conversation, and what we appreciate about him is he brings his checkbook. He, as you can see with the conversion of the Cortona Building, it's just been an amazing investment and asset he's created there, and he wants to, he sees that same opportunity and vision for the Pavilion. Now, while Dave may not be a resident of Renton, he is somebody we consider very close in seeing the opportunities and the vision and the investment in downtown Renton.
Okay, Councilmember Van?
Yeah, thank you, Chip, for answering my question, and I just, I guess, the thing I need is, as far as you were saying, two years, 24 months, after that, what is the timeline for completion of the project? Kind of just guessing.
Yeah, so, I gosh, I don't even want to guess because the thing is, this is just to start the conversation, and I hate to give open-ended answers like that, but let me give you an example. We have estimated that it's, there's about, the vision that was articulated in the Civic Core Plan is going to cost a minimum of $3 million. Now, what the Logan Markets share that is going to be, what the city shares, this is going to continue to be a city-owned asset. So, to that end, Amanda and her team in Economic Development have applied for an economic development grant from the federal government. You know, if we get the EDA grant from the federal government, that could change the schedule. We are not, you never bet and rely on grants though, but I just want the council to know that we're out there looking for a lot of different pots of money and resources that could help supplement and move this along. Even so, I think saying, you know, I, when I talked to Kenny Rogers, I told him, you know, honestly, a year, if we have a good framework in place to really start the conversations about setting dates with the council, I see that happening in a year.
Okay, yeah, let's see here. Councilmember McGurven, I believe you had your hand raised.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to quickly comment, and I'll lower my hand as I do that, on this. I certainly agree with the sentiments that have been expressed as far as this being just the beginning. I see so much potential in this space in terms of activating it, so I really, really do like the proposal. I think we found the right mix as far as flexibility goes, and I'm relieved to hear your staff say that, you know, there's time to work out some of the issues here, because I do think we should have those conversations. I certainly, for one, would like to hear from business owners that might not have been able to make it here tonight, that might be in favor of this because they might say, hey, look at this, this is going to activate the space, it's going to get people walking along storefronts, and it's going to, you know, produce an uptick in their foot traffic in their business. I think we would all agree, certainly, the investment in the Cortona Building has been beneficial for downtown, and to me, this could be another catalyst for downtown. I would like to comment on one item that Mr. Glenn raised, which was the other areas of the project, and I want to make sure that this doesn't represent a trade-off time with some of those quick wins, because I don't, to me, see a reason that we couldn't do both at the same time, but I would certainly love to hear from staff, we thought there'd be a capacity issue. For I, for one, if there is investment opportunity, certainly, we would like to take advantage of that while it's there, because it may not always be there in the future.
Yeah, Councilmember McGurven, yes, that is absolutely the case. If you actually saw our CD/BD work program that we're going to share with the council at the beginning of next year, you'll see we're working on multiple strategies from the Civic Core Plan concurrently. This, the Pavilion was honestly, one of, I see is one of the cornerstones of that plan now, and given the long timeframe for these negotiations and discussion and design to work, you know, we're going to have to be able to work on this while we're working on a lot of other initiatives. We just don't do them one at a time.
Councilmember Perez? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to take this opportunity to thank people that call us and share their views and opinions. I always find very fascinated how passionate our constituents when we talk about the downtown corridor, because obviously, as a city, we cannot do everything ourselves, but we're going to need our volunteers and our community leaders. I would like Chip, if we can invite him to the table, I think this project could be inclusive and not just is one or the other. I think that especially the three people, for all the people that call, they have been working with us to revitalize downtown for a long time, and obviously, they have a lot of means doing what they do in bringing people and attention to our downtown corridor. So, it would be great if part of the project is to include them as well and see how this new face of the Pavilion could accommodate as well of all the things that are already happening, and they are very vibrant in our downtown corridor. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see any other hands raised. Okay, Councilmember Corbin.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, yeah, I did want to just say, you know, how much, and we've mentioned it before, but Rain City Catering's been such a great partner. And our history with that building, and I sort of alluded to it in the Committee of the Whole, but has been that we've had periods of time when that building unfortunately was a pretty big drain on the city's finances. Rain City Catering has been a great partner because they have, in fact, been able to get events in there and activated, and we've been grateful. We actually had to do significant work initially when we acquired that building as a Mazda showroom and then converted it into the event center, and then had to do work a couple of other times, significant work. I think we had to do earthquake retrofits, and I think we had to later come back and adjust the HVAC system. And all of those, you know, we were investing millions and just really not generating the revenue. There were, there were design details when we, when we first completed that building, such as, I guess it would be on the west side, we left some of the beams, we'd actually shortened the building a little bit, but left some of the beams up so that it could become an activated outdoor restaurant space, for instance, and no one's ever really circled back and done that. So, I'd love for that to be looked at, and I'd just like to conclude by saying I hope that there is room for Rain City Catering and to still have events in this building. I understood from the Committee of the Whole that there would still be event space, and I'd love to see an event every day down there. So, anyways, thank you.
All right, I do not see any more hands at this time, and we have a motion on the floor. We'll call for the votes. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, nay?
Nay.
Okay. Okay, we have one nay and the rest all ayes. All right.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I may, yeah. And I very much appreciate staff for the thorough presentation, but I think for me, either yay or nay, I think we really need to make sure that we work with our small businesses that are being affected in the downtown area. We are still under the pandemic. Well, I understand the timeline is two years before construction, but it's still going to be impacting our small businesses. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You're back, okay. And I have a second. Yeah, you have a second one.
Okay, the next report is Committee of the Whole Committee Report, Updating Renton Regional Fire Authority Governing Board Terms. The Committee of the Whole recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to update the terms of appointment for the Renton Regional Fire Authority, RRFA Governing Board. The committee further recommends that the ordinance be presented for first reading.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Council President Corbin.
I move that council concur in the committee report.
Second. It's been moved by Council President Corbin, seconded by Councilmember McGurven, that the council concur with the Committee of the Whole report. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, nay? Okay, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, that's all, my unfinished business.
Councilmember Perez?
My committee has committee reports?
Yeah, I have one report, the Planning and Development Committee Committee Report, 2021 Title IV Docket 16 Group C. The Planning and Development Committee concurs with the staff and planning commission recommendation to adopt 2021 Title IV Docket 16 Group C. The Planning and Development Committee further recommends that ordinance for the items listed below be presented for first reading in advance to second and final reading tonight. D202 Ordinance to Extend the Sunset Date and Modify the Multifamily Property Tax Exemption, D203 Ordinance to Extend the Sunset Date of Waived Fees, and D204 Ordinance to Modify the Rental Registration Program.
Mr. Mayor? Councilmember Perez? I move that council concur with the Planning and Development Committee Report.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Perez, seconded by Councilmember Perez, that the council concur with the Planning and Development Committee Report. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, nay? Okay, motion carries.
That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember McGurven?
Like, Mr. Mayor, I don't have any new business, but I think Councilmember O'Halloran might have one, two, or maybe even 10. I didn't expect.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're aware.
I wrapped an arena paper printing them off. Councilmember O'Halloran?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the Finance Committee has 10 reports this evening.
Okay, one second. Make sure I have all 10. Yes, okay. First report, Finance Committee Committee Report. This was regarding Sunset Gardens Multifamily Fee Waiver Request. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve a 100% waiver of the eligible development fees and an 80% waiver of the transportation parks and fire impact mitigation fees for the Renton Housing Authority Sunset Gardens Development. Additionally, staff recommends deferring the execution and recording of the Affordable Housing Restrictive Covenant documents to prior to issuance of temporary certificate of occupancy for the first building and to authorize the mayor and city clerk to enter into the required contract relating to the terms and conditions of the fee waiver. The estimated total fees requested to be waived for the Sunset Gardens Development are $984,130. The committee further recommends that a resolution regarding this matter be presented for adoption.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember O'Halloran?
I move that council concur with the Finance Committee Committee Report.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember O'Halloran, seconded by Councilmember Perez, that the council approve the Finance Committee Report. Any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, nay. Okay, motion carries.
Okay, the next report is regarding a fee waiver for the watershed apartments project. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve 100% waiver of the eligible development fees and an 80% waiver of the transportation parks and fire impact mitigation fees for the GMD Development Watershed Apartments. Additionally, staff recommends deferring the execution and recording of the Affordable Housing Restrictive Covenant documents to prior to issuance of temporary certificate of occupancy for the first building and to authorize the mayor and city clerk to enter into a, the required contract relating to the terms and conditions of the fee waiver. The estimated total fees requested to be waived for the watershed apartments development are $1,264,150. The committee further recommends that a resolution regarding this matter be presented for adoption.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember O'Halloran?
I move that council concur with the Finance Committee Committee Report.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember O'Halloran, seconded by Councilmember Perez, that the council concur with the Finance Committee Report. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, nay. Motion carries.
Okay, the next report is regarding the renewal of stop loss coverage for 2022 with Symmetra. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve the 2022 excess loss, uh, stop loss insurance contract with Symmetra in the amount of $838,000 and to authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign the implementing documents when ready. The 2022 Symmetra contracts, uh, contract has a premium increase of 50% over 2021 and the individual deductible amount remains at $250,000. The cost includes coverage for active employees and left one retirees.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember O'Halloran?
I move that the council concur with the Finance Committee Committee Report.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember O'Halloran, seconded by Councilmember Perez, that the council concur with the Finance Committee Report. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, nay. Motion carries.
Okay, the next report is approval of the 2022 liability insurance renewal through the city's insurance broker alliance. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve the 2022 liability insurance policies through the city's insurance broker alliance and authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign the implementing documents in order to bind the insurance policies. The total premium cost for 2022 is $648,567.57, an increase of 20.5 and a half percent from the 2021 premium. The binder agreement has already been transmitted by the broker for execution prior to January 1st, 2022.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember O'Halloran?
I move that council concur with the Finance Committee Committee Report.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember O'Halloran, seconded by Councilmember Perez, that the council concur with the Finance Committee Report. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, nay. Motion carries.
Okay, the fifth report is regarding hiring a recreation coordinator at step D of the salary scale. A Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to authorize staff to compensate a selected recreation coordinator candidate at step D of grade A 18 effective December 16th, 2021.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember O'Halloran?
I move that council concur with the Finance Committee Report.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember O'Halloran, seconded by Councilmember Perez, that the council concur with the Finance Committee Report. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, nay. Motion carries.
Okay, the next report is regarding an agreement with Davy Resources Group for Certified Arborist Inspector Services. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve the 2022 Certified Consulting Arborist Inspector Agreement with Davy Resource Group Incorporated in the amount of $144,540 for inspecting arborist services to assist the Park and Recreation Department's Urban Forestry and Natural Resources Program.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember O'Halloran?
I move that the council concur with the Finance Committee Report.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember O'Halloran, seconded by Councilmember Perez, that the council concur with the Finance Committee Report. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, nay. Motion carries.
And the next report is regarding an agreement with Camber Corp. Uh, for the 2022 through 2024 Groundskeeping. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve the 2022 to, through 2024 Contract Groundskeeping Agreement with Camber Corp. in the amount of $623,048.19 contingent upon funding for contract groundskeeping services to assist the Parks and Recreation Department, Urban Forestry and Natural Resources Program, Landscape Maintenance Program.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember O'Halloran?
I move that the council concur with the Finance Committee Committee Report.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember O'Halloran, seconded by Councilmember Perez, that the council concur with the Finance Committee Report. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, nay. Motion carries.
All right, the next report is regarding an interagency agreement with the Washington Traffic Safety Commission. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve the interagency agreement with the Washington Traffic Safety Commission to receive up to $9,900 in grant funds to conduct multi-jurisdictional high-visibility enforcement, traffic safety emphasis patrols in support of target zero priorities of reducing traffic-related deaths and serious injuries.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember O'Halloran?
In the, in my words, words of Councilmember Perez, we love receiving grant money. And with that, I move that the council concur with the Finance Committee Committee Report.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember O'Halloran, seconded by Councilmember Perez, that the council concur with the Finance Committee Report. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, nay.
Hey, this is also for a grant. And you're going to like this one better, I think. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the Regional Mobility Capital Construction Grant Agreement in the amount of $2 million with the Washington State Department of Transportation and all subsequent agreements necessary to accomplish the Rainier Avenue South Corridor Improvements Phase Four Project.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember O'Halloran?
I move that council concur with the Finance Committee Report.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember O'Halloran, seconded by Councilmember Perez, that the council concur with the Finance Committee Report. Any discussion? Yes. Councilmember O'Halloran?
Thank you. It's, I understand that Senator Rebecca Saldana, who has some of Renton in her 37th district, was instrumental in negotiating for an increase in the regional mobility grant funding in the final 21 and 23 transportation budget to help ensure Renton could receive this $2 million grant on the Rainier Avenue South Corridor. So our, very much thank you and gratitude to Senator Saldana for her efforts. Thank you very much.
Fantastic. Okay, and there's motion on the floor. Any other discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, nay. Okay, motion carries.
Okay, the final Finance Committee Report is regarding a Consortium Fiber Project Agreement Number 78. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to authorize the mayor and city clerk to enter Agreement 78 with the Community Connectivity Consortium at no cost to the city of Renton in order to connect Valley Medical Center to C3 Fiber Network located at the King County RCECC C3 Node Site. The committee further recommends that the related resolution be presented for adoption.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember O'Halloran?
I understand with this 10th report that I was unable to break the record this year for the number of reports, but we'll give it another try next year. And with that, I move that the council concur with this Finance Committee Committee Report.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember O'Halloran, seconded by Councilmember Perez. The council concur with the Finance Committee Report. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, nay. Okay, motion carries. Yes, and I don't know what the, what the record is.
It's, it's, it's a lot.
I was going to say, yeah. Although 10's enough for tonight.
Yes.
All right, uh, Councilmember Rivera?
No new business, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Uh, no unfinished business. New business is next.
Sorry. Yeah, I caught Councilmember Perez trying to give me that hint too, thank you.
All right. We still mess up and we've been doing it for years, so it's not a big deal. Okay, Councilmember Van?
Uh, no unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
And Councilmember Perez?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No unfinished business.
No unfinished business, okay. And we're on to legislation. We have four resolutions. One ordinance for first reading, three ordinance for first and second reading, and 10 ordinance for second reading. We're going to be here a while.
I'll read as fast as I can. Uh, the first resolution is regarding, uh, the Right-of-Way ADA Transition Plan. Resolution of the City of Renton, Washington, adopting the Barrier-Free Mobility Renton, City of Renton Right-of-Way ADA Transition Plan.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Council President Corbin?
I move adoption of the resolution.
Second.
It's been moved by Council President Corbin, seconded by Councilmember McGurven, that the council adopt the resolution as read in discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, nay. Motion carries.
Okay, the next resolution is regarding the consortium agreement we just spoke about. Resolution of the City of Renton, Washington, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into interlocal agreement with Valley Medical Center, University of Washington, and King County entitled Consortium Project Agreement 78 regarding completion of a fiber optic pathway from Valley Medical Center to King County RCECC C3 Node Site, with such project being an endeavor of the Community Connectivity Consortium, which was previously formed by interlocal agreement.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember O'Halloran?
I move that the resolution be adopted as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember O'Halloran, seconded by Councilmember Perez, that the resolution be adopted as read. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, nay. Motion carries.
Okay, the next is regarding a waive, uh, waived fees for the watershed apartments. A Resolution of the City of Renton, Washington, waiving certain development and impact fees for GMD Developments Watershed Apartments Project.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember O'Halloran?
I move that the resolution be adopted as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember O'Halloran, seconded by Councilmember Perez, that the resolution be adopted as read. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, nay. Motion carries.
Okay, the next resolution is a, a fee waiver for the Sunset Gardens Project. Resolution of the City of Renton, Washington, waiving certain development and impact fees for Renton Housing Authority Sunset Gardens Project.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember O'Halloran?
I move that the resolution be adopted as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember O'Halloran, seconded by Councilmember Perez, that the resolution be adopted as read. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, nay. Motion carries.
Okay, next we have an ordinance for first reading. This is regarding the Renton Fire Authority's Governing Board, uh, terms. So an ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, amending Section 221/4 of the Renton Municipal Code, updating the terms of appointment for the Renton Regional Fire Authority Governing Board, providing for severability and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Council President Corbin?
Um, first of all, that point of order, are we proposing it be advanced to second, final tonight?
Yeah, no.
It wasn't on the agenda that way.
Okay, okay, sorry, okay. Uh, I move this ordinance be placed on second, final reading at the next council meeting.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Council President Corbin, seconded by Councilmember McGurven, that this ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, nay. Motion carries.
All right, the next three ordinances are for first reading and then advancement to second and final reading at tonight's meeting. These are regarding the, uh, Planning and Development Committee's Committee Report. Uh, the first is regarding, uh, the multifamily tax exemption. So an ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, amending Section 41220 of the Renton Municipal Code by extending the multifamily housing property tax exemption, allowing extended property tax exemptions under certain conditions, allowing exemptions for up to 20 years for permanently affordable homeownership, making technical changes consistent with Chapter 84, uh, 84 dot 14 of the Revised Code of Washington as amended, providing for severability and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Perez?
I move the ordinance be placed on second and final reading tonight.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Perez, seconded by Councilmember Perez, that this ordinance be placed on second and final reading tonight. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, nay. Motion carries.
All right, I'll read it again. An ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, amending Section 41220 of the Renton Municipal Code by extending the multifamily housing property tax exemption, allowing extended property tax exemptions under certain conditions, allowing exemptions for up to 20 years for permanently affordable homeownership, making technical changes consistent with Chapter 8414 of the Rise, Revised Code of Washington as amended, providing for severability and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Perez?
I move the ordinance be adopted as read.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Perez, seconded by Councilmember Perez, that the ordinance be adopted as read. Any discussion? This requires a roll call.
Council President Corbin?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember McGurven?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Halloran?
Aye.
Councilmember Rivera?
Aye.
Councilmember Vaughn?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all ayes.
Motion carries.
All right, the next ordinance is regarding waived fees. And it too is for first and second reading. An ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, amending subsections 41210B10 and 41210C10 of the Renton Municipal Code by extending the waiver of certain development and mitigation fees, providing for severability and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Council, Councilmember Perez?
I move the ordinance be placed on second and final reading tonight.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Perez, seconded by Councilmember, or Council President Corbin, that this ordinance be placed on second and final reading at tonight's meeting. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, nay. Okay, motion carries.
Okay, an ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, amending subsections 41210B10 and 41210C10 of the Renton Municipal Code by extending the waiver of certain development and mitigation fees, providing for severability and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Perez?
Move the ordinance be adopted as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Prince, seconded by Councilmember Perez, that this ordinance be adopted as read. In discussion. This requires a roll call.
Council President Corman?
Aye.
Councilmember Prince?
Aye.
Councilmember McGurven?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Halloran?
Aye.
Councilmember Rivera?
Aye.
Councilmember Vaughn?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all ayes.
Motion carries.
Okay, this is the third and final ordinance for first and second reading tonight. It's regarding the Renton, um, excuse me, the rental registration, uh, program. An ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, amending Section Four Five One Twenty-Five of the Renton Municipal Code, clarifying requirements for landlords under the city's residential rental registration and inspection program, providing for severability and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Prince.
Move the ordinance to be placed on second and final reading tonight.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Prince, seconded by Councilmember Perez, that the ordinance be placed on second and final reading at tonight's meeting in discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, nay. Motion carries.
Okay, an ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, amending Section Four Five One Twenty-Five, the Renton Municipal Code, clarifying requirements for landlords under the city's residential, uh, rental registration and inspection program, providing for severability and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Prince.
Move the ordinance to be adopted as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Prince, seconded by Councilmember Perez, that this ordinance be adopted as read in discussion. This requires a roll call.
Council President Corman?
Aye.
Councilmember Prince?
Aye.
Councilmember McGurven?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Halloran?
Aye.
Councilmember Rivera?
Aye.
Councilmember Vaughn?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Uh, roll call, Mr. Mayor, all ayes.
Motion carries.
Alright, the, next up we have ten ordinances for second and final reading. Uh, the first is regarding the Twenty Twenty-Two Salary Table. Right, yeah. An ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, adopting the Twenty Twenty-Two City of Renton Salary Table for non-represented city employees, ask me local Twenty-One Seventy City Employees, Renton Police Department Commissioned Officers, and Renton Police Department Non-Commissioned Officers.
Mr. Mayor?
Uh, Councilmember O'Halloran?
I move the ordinance to be adopted as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember O'Halloran, seconded by Councilmember Prince, that the ordinance be adopted as read in discussion. This requires a roll call.
Council President Corman?
Aye.
Councilmember Prince?
Aye.
Councilmember McGurven?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Halloran?
Aye.
Councilmember Rivera?
Aye.
Councilmember Vaughn?
Aye.
And Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all ayes.
Motion carries.
Alright, the next is, uh, Docket Item One Eighty-Five, Bonus Density Third-Party Reporting. An ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, amending subsections Four Eight One Twenty-C and Four Nine, uh, Zero Six Five D-One, the Renton Municipal Code, amending bonus density annual reporting requirements, providing for severability and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Prince.
Move the ordinance to be adopted as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Prince, seconded by Councilmember Perez, that the ordinance be adopted as read in discussion. Requires a roll call.
Council President Corman?
Aye.
Councilmember Prince?
Aye.
Councilmember McGurven?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Halloran?
Aye.
Councilmember Rivera?
Aye.
Councilmember Vaughn?
Aye.
And Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all ayes.
Motion carries.
Next is Docket One Eighty-Six, Regarding Cottage Housing. An ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, amending, uh, sections Four Two One Ten, Four Two One Fifteen, subsections Four Four Eighty-F Ten D, Four Four Ninety-A and Four Four Ninety-B, Section Four Seven Ninety, subsections Four Nine Sixty-five A, Four Nine Sixty-five B, Four Five Sixty-five D, Four Nine Two Hundred B and Four Nine Two Hundred D, and Section Four Eleven Thirty of the Renton Municipal Code, adding cottage house development regulations, including adding a definition of cottage house development to Section Four Eleven Thirty, providing for severability and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Prince.
Move the ordinance to be adopted as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Prince, seconded by Councilmember Perez, the ordinance be adopted as read in discussion. This requires a roll call.
Council President Corman?
Aye.
Councilmember Prince?
Aye.
Councilmember McGurven?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Halloran?
Aye.
Councilmember Rivera?
Aye.
Councilmember Vaughn?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
I got it. Uh, roll call, Mr. Mayor, all ayes.
Okay, motion carries.
Alright, next item is Docket One Eighty-Eight, which is, uh, Impact Fee Credit. An ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, amending subsections Four One Ninety-G Four and Four One Ninety-G Six of the Renton Municipal Code, revising collection of impact fee regulations, providing for several, severability and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Prince.
Move the ordinance to be adopted as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Prince, seconded by Councilmember Perez, that this ordinance be adopted as read in discussion. This requires a roll call.
Okay, Council President Corman?
Aye.
Councilmember Prince?
Aye.
Councilmember McGurven?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Halloran?
Aye.
Councilmember Rivera?
Aye.
Councilmember Vaughn?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all ayes.
Motion carries.
Alright, next is Docket One Eighty-Nine, Setbacks in Commercial Zones. An ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, amending subsections Four Two One Twenty-A, Four Two One Twenty-C Fifteen, and Four Two One Twenty-C Sixteen of the Renton Municipal Code, clarifying setback requirements for front yards and secondary front yards within the commercial neighborhood CN, Center Village CV, and Commercial Arterial CA Zones, providing for severability and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Prince.
Move the ordinance to be adopted as read.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Prince, seconded by Councilmember Perez, that the ordinance be adopted as read in discussion. Requires a roll call.
Alright, Council President Corman?
Aye.
Uh, Councilmember Prince?
Aye.
Councilmember McGurven?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Halloran?
Aye.
Councilmember Rivera?
Aye.
Councilmember Vaughn?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Uh, aye. Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all ayes.
Okay, motion carries, we're halfway home.
Alright, next is, uh, Docket, uh, One Ninety, Regarding Applicability of Design Regulations. An ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, amending subsections Four Three One Hundred B One A of the Renton Municipal Code, clarifying that conversion of a non-residential use to a residential use is subject to urban design regulations, providing for severability and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Prince.
Move the ordinance to be adopted as read.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Prince, seconded by Councilmember Perez, that the ordinance be adopted as read in discussion. This requires a roll call.
President Corman?
Aye.
Uh, Councilmember Prince?
Aye.
Uh, Councilmember McGurven?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Halloran?
Aye.
Councilmember Rivera?
Aye.
Councilmember Vaughn?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Uh, roll call, Mr. Mayor, all ayes.
Motion carries.
Alright, next is Docket One Ninety-One, which is ADUs with religious institutions. Uh, an ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, amending subsections Four Four Eighty-A Seven and Four Four Eighty-F Ten D, Section Four Nine Thirty, and the definition of dwelling unit accessory in Section Four Eleven Forty of the Renton Municipal Code, amending accessory dwelling unit ADU regulation, regulations, providing for severability and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Prince.
Move the ordinance to be adopted as read. Second.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Prince, seconded by Council President Corman, that the ordinance be adopted as read in discussion. Requires a roll call.
Council President Corman?
Aye.
Councilmember Prince?
Aye.
Councilmember McGurven?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Halloran?
Aye.
Councilmember Rivera?
Aye.
Councilmember Vaughn?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
We didn't hear you.
Was that?
Councilmember Perez.
Aye.
Okay, got it. Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all ayes.
Motion carries.
Alright, next is, uh, Docket One Ninety-Two, which is, uh, regarding fence regulations. An ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, amending Section Four Four, uh, Forty of the Renton Municipal Code, revising fence, hedge, and retaining wall regulations, providing for severability and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Prince.
Move the ordinance to be adopted as read.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Prince, seconded by Councilmember Perez, that the ordinance be adopted as read in discussion. This requires a roll call.
Pre, uh, Council President Corman?
Aye.
Councilmember Prince?
Aye.
Councilmember McGurven?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Halloran?
Aye.
Councilmember Rivera?
Aye.
Councilmember Vaughn?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Got it. Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all ayes.
Motion carries.
Right next is Docket, uh, One Ninety-Six, Regarding Height and Setbacks in the RMF Zone. Uh, an ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, amending subsections Four Two One Ten A and Four Two One Ten E Twenty of the Renton Municipal Code, amending height and setback regulations in the RMF, Residential Multifamily Zone, providing for severability and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Prince.
Move the ordinance to be adopted as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Prince, seconded by Councilmember Perez, that the ordinance be adopted as read in discussion. Okay, this requires a roll call.
Okay, Council President Corman?
Aye.
Councilmember Prince?
Aye.
Councilmember McGurven?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Halloran?
Aye.
Councilmember Rivera?
Aye.
Councilmember Vaughn?
Aye.
And Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all, all ayes.
Okay, motion carries.
One second. And I believe we're on the last one. Docket One Ninety-Nine, Residential Accessory Structures. Ordinance Number, uh, Six Zero Four Nine. Yep. Uh, an ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, amending residential accessory structures, regulations in subsections Four Two One Ten A, Four Two One Ten B, Four Two One Ten E Four, Four Two One Ten E Seventeen, and Four Six Thirty C of the Renton Municipal Code, the definition of building height in Section Four Eleven Twenty of the Renton Municipal Code, and Table One Two Nine A of the City of Renton Surface Water Design Manual, providing for severability and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Prince.
First, I feel like we need to give Jason a pitcher of water after having to read all this stuff. Secondly, I move the ordinance to be adopted as read.
Second.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Prince, seconded by Councilmember, Council President Corman, that the ordinance be adopted as read in discussion. Okay, this requires a roll call one more time.
Council President Corman?
Aye.
Councilmember Prince?
Aye.
Councilmember McGurven?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Halloran?
Aye.
Councilmember Rivera?
Aye.
Councilmember Vaughn?
Aye.
And Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Uh, roll call, Mr. Mayor, all ayes.
Okay, motion carries. Thank you, Jason.
Yeah.
Thank you, staff. That's a lot of work. Alright, up next is new business. What's that?
Oh, yeah, go ahead. Sorry.
Mumbling under your breath in the middle of a meeting. Awesome. Council President?
Uh, yes. Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, just a couple of announcements, um, as a reminder to the community, uh, this is the last scheduled meeting of the year, so, um, December twentieth, we are having a council holiday, and Monday, December twenty-seventh, we're having a council holiday. And, um, I just wanted to give Kathy a chance to say goodbye as well.
Kathy, thank you, uh, thank you for, uh, um, sharing him with us for the last twenty-eight years to help me see business forward.
You're welcome.
Yes, indeed. Alright, uh, next is Councilmember Prince.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I have no new business. I do want to say one thing. It's gonna be strange not seeing Randy on these Zooms. But you get your Mondays back, so.
Yeah.
But, uh, you, thank you for all you've done for the City of Renton, we'll miss you.
Thank you, Ed.
Yeah, Councilmember McGurven?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, um, I do have one meeting to announce that's in the new year. Uh, before I do, I certainly wanted to, uh, share some kind words for, uh, Council President Corman on his way out the door. Uh, Councilmember Prince, the words right in my mouth, I was gonna say exactly that. Uh, so I wasn't gonna say Zoom, I was gonna say on council. Uh, the Zoom thing is weird by itself. Uh, it's, it's gonna be odd after twenty-eight years not having Randy Corman up on the dais. Um, I had to think about that for a second, so, uh, you, you've been on council since I was eleven, to date myself. Uh, this is a big change for Renton. Thank you for all your many, many years of service. Uh, it, it, it's very, very clear you've had an impact, and I would say, and one thing I've certainly admired about I use your ability to, uh, take in input from people and then listen and process and, and always try to find a workable solution. So I will say, when I, when I chose to run, uh, you were, I would say, the council member I kind of looked to in terms of modeling myself after in terms of my deliberation process, so thank you.
Well, it's very kind, thank you. That was very, very nice comment.
And did you announce your meeting?
I forgot to announce my meeting, see, I shouldn't have done that first. Um, we're off to a great start for Twenty Twenty, uh, two, alright, so, uh, I would like to announce, uh, we're gonna start off Twenty Twenty Two by announcing that the committee, the hall is gonna be canceled on Monday, January third. Uh, but there will be a council meeting at seven PM via video conference that same day. Thank you. And that's all, Mr. Mayor.
Alright. Thank you, and Councilmember O'Halloran?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I have no new business, but I also wanted to congratulate, uh, Randy on your retirement.
on your retirement, and you have certainly earned it, and I appreciate your service and your sacrifice to the city all of these years. Thank you very kindly.
Thank you.
All right, um, Councilmember Rivera.
Now, no new business, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. And also, um, I wasn't gonna say anything, but since Councilmember McGurven brought it up, Randy has been on council since I was four, and so I think he's been a staple in my life and in the Renton community, um, for as long as I can tell. So I also want to wish him a happy retirement. And I also learned that, I don't know if this was in the proclamation, but Randy was the second youngest ever um, council member or city council person ever elected to the council. I, I think, we're still working to confirm that, but one of the youngest people ever elected. So I am really in admiration of your career, Councilmember Corman. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, thank you.
And no new business.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, Councilmember Van.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I don't, I don't have any new business. Um, just wanted to congratulate Randy, Councilmember Corman, um, for your service, uh, and of course, happy retirement, and wish you, see you around in Renton. So, thank you, man.
All right, thank you. And um, Councilmember Perez, are you gonna tell us how old you were when Randy was elected?
Of course, of course, of course. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. More than anything, I want to say that no business. Uh, and as a point, I will take a point of personal privilege to, to actually recognize and acknowledge our, our colleague, President uh, Corman. Uh, Randy, and, and just for the record, yeah, uh, we know that council member, former council member Kathy Kocher, and former mayor as well, she was twenty-nine when she was uh, elected the first time. So as far as we know, she's the youngest, and then Randy, who was elected when he was thirty, right? See, if I remember correctly. But apparently they were, in the early days, were people that were younger elected, but the only thing that, the only thing that I know is that Kathy was twenty-nine. So, but uh, but uh, your compass, your, the way you listen to people, uh, you have touched, taught me so much in the last seven years, always to be a mediator in that dais, always to try to bring the public's opinion, but listen to your colleagues, and always never confrontational, always uh, trying to find the middle solution for the greater of the community. You always thought uh, before every vote, how this was gonna benefit the community more than anything else. Uh, that was very appreciated. That's the reason why you are beloved and respected in this community, because the community has seen you forever as a leader that will respect their voice. And um, and well, we will remember you for a lot of things. One of those is our library over the, over the, the river. You were one of those that say, this library is gonna stay here forever. Uh, you marched for that, and you voted for that, and at the end of the day, you come back to the dais to get along with all your council members as usual, never um, never letting personal issues get in the middle. Uh, that's the reason why you succeed to be such an incredible leader for twenty-eight years. But not just that, we were very, very envy for most of council members, because term after term, you were on the post, and we were like, how is he doing that? But uh, but Randy, thank you for your advice. Thank you for always being very sensible to new council members to help us uh, understand the, the, the road, and always being available if we called you and asked what we thought were stupid questions. With your large institutional knowledge, you were capable to bring some perspective on a lot of the issues. While it's our job, even though we were just like yesterday, to know what's happening in the city forever, to get to speed, it's always helps uh, having council members that help us to get there. So, thank you very much, Randy, for everything, and all your children and family. Well, thank you for sharing him with us for so, so many years. That's it, Mr. Mayor.
I'm very touched. Thank, thank you all for those comments.
Thank you.
Uh, you know, I, I will, I will, I'll say that there, there was one, there was one year when I was, I was the youngest member of the city council and also the most senior. I think it was when I was maybe ten years in or something, but I can't remember. Um, but uh, I am, I'm really touched, and I uh, was gonna try not to tear up tonight, but you got, got me there. So, thank you. I, I just love you all, and I'm really gonna miss you.